Today.
Got a little busy today.
I had let the snow melt off along more than I left outside Saturday.
Okay, it is six forty P M on October fifteenth. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel, will be presiding at the meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, welcome everyone. The roll call, Councilmember Havelston.
Here.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batcher.
Here.
Councilmember Highland.
Here.
Not member Call.
Here.
All councilmembers are present. Also, here at the table is on my left, the city administrator, Pat Melvin, on my right, the city attorney, Ross Arneson. With us in the audience, Patrolman Knoxen, welcome. And also Kurt Mayne, representing the Arlington Methodist rise. At this time, are there any changes in the agenda? I do want to strike item seven D, which is a September City of Arlington financial report. That will be held off to our next meeting.
Seven which?
Seven D is enballed.
I had come in with the intent to get that done and the day took off in a totally different direction. So I apologize, but sometimes that happens. And so I will have that update for you. First of November with an explanation as to where those numbers are and why.
Motion is in order to approve the... I was just waiting.
Oh, that's added?
So I have about three agendas going here, so I better get down to the one that... That's right.
I can add an item, or is that for Rich to do? I'll add approved deny resolution sixty-nine twenty eighteen.
Sixty-nine or sixty?
Sixty-eight, eight, twenty eighteen, sorry.
Michelle, turn your microphone so I can...
Approving terms of a loan to R and R Auto Repair from the Arlington DEA facade program for project seventeen West Main Street.
Okay, addition of item ten D. Is there one of them on, just read?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with amendments.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Batcher, second by councilmember Yashewski, to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion is carried. Actually, consent agenda item A is not...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was, it was in our packets.
On September seventeenth?
Yeah. Seventeenth?
That's in their packet.
Yeah, that's in our packet.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we, I'm sorry, we do have to remove then the October first?
Oh.
Meeting minutes I...
It's not ready yet.
Correct, yeah.
Uh, amend my motion to, uh, with the...
With the deletion.
With the deletion. Uh, for the...
Consent agenda item E.
E.
Second again.
Oh, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close no. All right, moving on to consent agenda. Item A, approval of the September seventeenth regular meeting minutes. Item B, approval of September twenty-fifth special meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the September twenty-fifth special closed meeting minutes. Item D, approval of September twenty-eighth special meeting minutes. And item F, which is, in effect, will become item E, approval of the bills. Item G will become item F, and that is approval of three-day temporary on-sale license, liquor license for Sibley County Relay for Life, for events on November third, twenty eighteen, February sixteen, twenty nineteen, and March sixth, twenty nineteen.
I would like to make one change to the September twenty-eighth minutes. Um, I don't know if that's a resolution, uh, change as well, or, um, I'd like to add the following sums of money. Our six percent tax levy increase.
That will be added then to the, to the minutes of the twenty, uh, September twenty-eighth meeting.
And seeing that was part of a resolution, do we have to do anything with that, or?
What was the number, Michelle?
Um, six percent. So the sums are on the back page on the resolution sixty-one twenty eighteen.
Was it actually part of the original resolution, just wasn't spiced?
So this was the original that we changed.
The number doesn't change, it's just it's adding that six percent.
To it.
Yep, in there.
So the original resolution, though, was, was rescinded, was it not?
Um, yes.
The one from the...
Correct.
Okay. So that one goes away, we're not...
Correct. What we're approving is this dollar figure of eighty-five, which is a six percent increase.
Um, I don't see it in the resolution prior.
Uh, yeah, it's, uh...
I don't believe, um, but it was in, if we could just add it to the minutes then.
The six percent was in the twenty-fifth meeting minutes, I believe.
Yeah.
Just not the twen- the twenty-eighth.
So if we add it to the minutes, then that would be in the...
So I add the six percent to the twenty-eighth.
Because I don't see the... That's a, just a correction in the minutes.
Okay. Consent agenda items have been read. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve what amendment?
Second.
Motion by councilmember Batcher, second by councilmember Yashewski, to approve the consent agenda items with the amendment of the September twenty-eighth special meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion carried. I don't think we have anyone wanting to address the council this evening. Don't pass that and get into announcements.
First item that we have this evening is that the Arlington Police Department will be, uh, doing the DEA National Med Takeback on October twenty-second through the twenty-seventh. This is an opportunity for residents to stop into the Emergency Services Building and drop off any unused or expired prescription medications. So, uh, the benefit being that you get them out of your house, get them out, uh, of children's reach or anybody else who, uh, might purposely or by accident misuse that medication. So you can properly dispose of, uh, these medications by stopping in, uh, to the Arlington Police Department again October twenty-second through the twenty-seventh from eight-thirty, uh, to three in the afternoon to drop that medication off. The second announcement this evening is that on October twenty-third from seven to eight fifteen, there will be, uh, here at the Arlington Community Center, there'll be a chance to meet and hear from candidates for mayor and city council forum. Uh, we will have candidates, Michelle Batcher, Jim Highland, Jennifer Nusie, and, uh, Rich Nagle, who will be, uh, at that forum. So it's being held again here at the Arlington Community Center on Tuesday, October twenty-third from seven to eight fifteen. Next item is the Driver Improvement Program for individuals who are fifty-five plus. Invited to, uh, come on October twenty-ninth for the four-hour refresher course, or if they have not taken the course, uh, before, it's a little bit longer, but there is a session from, um, five-thirty to nine-thirty on November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth for those first-time attendees. Both of these sessions will be held here at the Arlington Community Center. Anybody who is interested in participating is encouraged to contact one eight 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 two three four one two nine four, or they can email the at www dot Minnesota Safety Center dot org. Individuals who go through this training oftentimes are eligible for discounts on their, um, car insurance. So, um, we're happy to make that available to residents.
Is it true that the driving test is going to be given at Arlington Raceway? Okay, it's not true.
You can sign up and you can tell us.
I will.
Last but not least for announcements, then we have the Arlington Fright Night. This will be the eighth annual Halloween Fright Night, sponsored by the Arlington Area Chamber of Commerce, on Wednesday, October thirty-first, from five-thirty to seven P M. There'll be trick-or-treating along Main Street, east of Highway five to First Avenue. Uh, they'll have a haunted house, free food, and games will be, uh, available above the dugout. Again, that date is Wednesday, October thirty-first, from five-thirty to seven.
All right. Thank you. Any questions on the announcements? Moving to communications.
First item under communications is the September building report. We had a total of eleven, uh, projects, eight of which were residential. Uh, one was a land use issue dealing with the fence, and two were, uh, commercial. The most significant one is, uh, property being, uh, remodeled, located on Main Street. Some of you may have seen it. If you drive by, it stands out from the rest because it's on stilts. But in addition to that, we also have Ridgeview Sibley Medical Center, uh, doing some signage on their facility, now that some of their construction has ended, so, um... Are there any questions, uh, on the building report that was included in your packet? Moving on to the second item, the Minnesota Department of Health Notification of Sanitary Survey Report for Arlington Public Water Systems. Uh, included in your packet is a letter dated October first from the Minnesota Department of Health. In the letter, uh, they basically are assuring you, they do conduct a test to evaluate the adequacy, um, of safe drinking water. Uh, they conduct sanitary, sanitary surveys on a regular basis, uh, to prevent any contamination of water drinking supplies. And for Arlington, they tested six different locations on, I believe it was September twelve?
About a month ago.
About a month ago.
I was one of them. I do have a question regarding the, um... Yeah, so it says that, um, the city has regained ownership of well number three. Is that your question, or your...
Yes, and, and I did contact him to inquire about that. Uh, that was a misunderstanding. We do not have, uh, ownership of well three.
Okay.
And so he was going to follow up and clarify that, so...
Okay.
Nope, so, yeah.
It is, however, tested and run periodically, so...
It goes through the same testing requirements, yep, as our, uh, two wells to do. So on the last, on page three of three there, you can see, uh, the locations of where they took the samples, and you can see what they were testing for was chlorine residual, uh, coliform bacteria, and E. coli. And, uh, we were all, in all of the tests, we were well within standards, so, uh, we passed their, their evaluation. Uh, item C under communications is just a, uh, thank you email from Felicia Brockoff, uh, the individual who's responsible for coordinating the tractor ride for Darren Schultz. Uh, basically, uh, just wanting to thank, uh, the city as well as the staff, the police department, the ambulance, and the fire department, uh, as well as Public Works for their assistance, managing traffic, uh, providing picnic tables, and doing a lot of other tasks to help with that event. They had a successful event with a total of sixty-two tractors, one classic truck, one semi-tractor, and two A T Vs. In the process, they raised, uh, ten thousand five hundred dollars for Darren Schultz, which will help pay for his wheelchair ramp and deck, and also medical bills, so. Wonderful event, and, uh, Felicia just wanted to thank us for helping out with that. Any questions?
Okay, hearing no questions, we will go on to reports. Officer Knoxen. Good evening again.
Good evening.
Make sure the mic is on there, the button in front.
Got a green light.
Awesome.
Okay, there we go.
Perfect. All right, uh, I'm obviously in here, Dick Pedersen, just because he's been gone, but he does send his regards. Uh, he did ask me to talk about a couple of things, obviously the first being our numbers. We had two more calls for service than we did last month, still busy as usual. Couple of decent arrests have been made, one for DUI and one for narcotics that I found last couple of days ago. So, um, still staying busy, still trying to find as much as we can. Couple of things that John had wanted me to kind of hit on, so the League of Minnesota Cities had come down and done the audit. One of the things that they had requested that we look into was an eye cleaning station due to the use of our gun cleaning tools and solvents and stuff like that, um, that has been purchased and will be put in our new garage, which is another thing he wanted me to touch on, was the parts for that garage stall that we were going to be adding to the back of the garage, or the office, has been, all the parts are in, we're just waiting on that to be installed. So once that's done, we'll be utilizing that for the squad car. With that being said, the school has also been interested in how the terrancy ordinance is coming along, and I believe Ross and Chief Pedersen have been working on that and trying to find language for that. But as far as the school goes, we've been conducting a few more school patrols, and with the new radio system, it's been very helpful that we've been able to walk through. I know personally, I've been able to walk through at peak times like the end of the school day or lunchtime if I'm in that early, and just making conversation with the kids. I haven't, I did a check today before council meeting and didn't see very many calls for service other than just walking through the school that are indicating that there's any problems there. Um, something John has been seeing is the use of the electronic cigarettes and kids outside, just trying to curb those addiction habits starting, and those juvenile things. But again, the radio system inside has been awesome and very helpful, and we're looking forward to seeing how the eight-hundred system goes in, in the future here. Some other things is just the, uh, department has been participating as an unfunded partner of the Toward Zero Dust Program, which is a Minnesota initiative to curb distracted driving, drunk driving, speeding, main issues like seat belts for traffic incidents. As an unfunded partner, we just do it as we are on shift, and look forward to potentially in the future gaining some approval to go and partner either with Lundco or on our own for a grant-funded P Z D program where the state would actually give us funds to produce overtime for officers to do extra traffic enforcement. Another thing that we've been looking at is our Facebook page, we've been trying to be much more active on. I've been trying to make a kind of get out there post for the city and for community members to interact with us a little bit better, and been doing, I mean, a post every week or so. And it, John has heard some positive comments, I've heard some positive comments, so I think that's been a positive thing. But other than that, there hasn't been a whole lot that's really noteworthy. Unless you all have any questions for me, I can answer them to the best of my abilities.
I noticed the post you put on the police, with the police deal, about the streets were all open.
Yep.
That was kind of nice because I know a lot of people were asking, hey, when are they going to be? It's always nice that was on there.
Yep.
Because I know some other community members said that they had noticed that.
Awesome.
Do you know anything about nine getting open?
Nine is open from our understanding. So all the signs have been moved off to the side, some of them still face traffic, but off to the shoulder, they are open.
And it's all striped.
It is, it is painted, and I've been seeing a little bit of speed issue out there. So we've been trying to curb that, obviously people enjoy the new roads, but...
Okay. Any other questions?
I just had one comment. I presume the council has perceived that our present police department has been extremely active in enforcing our nuisance ordinances, and we've had some problem properties that have been substantially cleaned up, but it's a constant battle, and we have a few hard heads out there that, uh, you know, it seems like they don't get the message, and, uh... So, uh, keep fighting the good fight, but I, I think actually, uh, you know, there has been positive progress community-wide. I think the standard has been raised.
I've noticed quite a few properties that are, you know, noticeably improved.
And the chief has assigned, uh, you know, to the officers too, and so, um, like, James has pursued certain of those situations, and, and so has Sarah. So it's a department effort.
Yeah, it's, it's never the kind of thing that you can, uh, at the end of the day, sometime six months from now, you say, gosh, they got them all taken care of.
It just never ends.
It just never ends.
But like they said, it sure, some of these properties are sure looking a lot nicer.
For sure.
Absolutely. For sure.
Yep.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, James. All right, we're going to move on to ordinances. We have, um, second reading of ordinance three twenty-two, and that is dealing with, uh, storage of firewood.
Councilmembers, you will recall that, uh, at a previous, uh, workshop, we've had some discussion about ordinances and also things that have come up since that time. We've had some further discussion on, one of those was the, uh, storing of, storage of firewood. John, Chief John Pedersen has been out and about and, uh, has noted that some properties are very well kept. They have wood stacked very nicely, but maybe they are in excess of the two cords of wood, which are put into our ordinance, and it was his recommendation that you remove that, uh, amount. So if you look at it, what they're looking to do is they're removing the description not exceeding two cords, and they are adding, uh, stacked in a neat and orderly manner, uh, to the sentence, which reads, "Firewood for use only on the premises provided it is stored in an interior side or rear yard stacked in a neat and orderly manner." So that was the recommendation that came from the, uh, planning committee, and this is the second reading of that proposed change.
We need a motion to approve the, um... How do we do that?
The second reading? I know down below, we have resolutions addressing it.
Yep.
So, we really don't...
Nope, if anybody's here to...
We don't need any, just, uh...
We just read it twice.
Just read it twice, so this will constitute then the second reading of ordinance three twenty-two, dealing with the quantity, or eliminating the quantity limit on firewood. Okay? Moving on to item B, second reading of ordinance three twenty-three, and that one is dealing with, uh, fires within the city of Arlington.
It was brought to our attention by, uh, Public Works Department that, uh, we had an ordinance which prohibited fires, uh, within the, the city, uh, outdoor fires, that, uh, that is prohibited those within the city. However, we didn't have an exception for our own Public Works who will, from time to time, have outdoor fires out at the compost site in order to burn and, uh, remove some of the brush. So this is the second reading for that as well. Uh, what we are proposing is to change, uh, section six point oh six fires by simply adding a sentence which reads, "This section does not apply to the city of Arlington brush and yard waste dump site, where occasional controlled burns of accumulated brush may take place by city staff." I believe that at our last reading, there was the addition, uh, of by city staff in order to avoid any misunderstanding as to who's allowed to burn at that site.
Any comments or questions on this one? Hearing none, that constitutes a second reading of, uh, ordinance three twenty-three, dealing with the, um, allowing the staff of the city of Arlington to do controlled burns at the dump site. And that will be dealt with also in a resolution down below. Next through the first reading, ordinance three twenty-four, meaning chapter eleven of city code, keeping of animals.
This is an issue that was brought to our attention when we held the workshop to talk about, uh, some concerns with our existing, uh, code and ordinances. Uh, at that time, it was reported to us that there were some individuals within the city, that did have, uh, chickens, and so, uh, it was recommended that the planning committee review that. At that time, the council seemed to be in favor of looking at, uh, possibly allowing that. So they have, uh, evaluated the policy that some other communities have, and have come up with a revised policy which would, uh, basically allow individuals, to have chickens up to, uh, I believe...
Six.
Six.
Six. Six chickens, um, uh, and so...
Chickens or ducks?
Or ducks.
Or ducks.
Two of six.
Combined.
Combined.
Yep.
And only female?
Yes. Oh, there's your section. So that is in front of you in the, uh, ordinance number three twenty-four. Uh, if you have any questions or anything, we could certainly review that.
Any questions regarding the first reading of this change in ordinance?
We talked a lot about setbacks. We talked a lot about numbers, uh, numbers of animals, birds, well, not birds, either chickens or ducks. We specified what kind of animals, and, uh, made sure that it was females, uh, of the chickens or ducks.
Was there any talk about notifying the neighbors?
There was a little talk on that, and... We felt that it, it, it's your yard, you should be able to do what you want to do with it, right? So we weren't, you, you, you could probably notify them, but they're not going to have a say in whether or not you can have them, right?
And is there a...
To be a nice neighbor, I mean, you just do that, right?
Administrative permit, subject issuance of administrative permit from the city. I was just saying, my son in Shorewood, when he did the chicken thing, he had to notify all the people within five hundred feet of his yard.
Just notify him that he's having them, not gain approval?
I think he had to have them sign off that they were okay with it. And as long as things are kept neat and orderly, and the chicken coops are cleaned, and the manure is properly disposed of, it shouldn't be a problem.
Well, we also talked about like the, um, setbacks from the property line, um, and then there was talk about really small lots, right? And how, 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 if we should restrict them from small lots or not? And I guess at the end of the day, it was, you need to meet the, the minimum setbacks, which is ten feet, I believe, from a property line. So in that case, if you, if you live on a tiny, tiny...
It might be in the kitchen or sen yards.
If you, if you live in a tiny, tiny little lot, you might not... If you, if you live in a tiny, tiny little lot, you might not be able to.
Okay.
Have them. But with ten feet, there's a good chance that maybe right behind your house or something, you'd be able to do something.
Oh, Chris, order some chickens, please.
Only six females.
And you have to get your permit too.
You gotta, yeah.
I got connections.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm glad to see that done. I think, uh, folks did a good job putting that together.
Okay, this will then be considered the first reading of our ordinance number, change of ordinance number three twenty-four.
Jim, did you, did you feel like something had to be put in there regarding approval of neighbors within five hundred feet?
Personally, I, I think it'd be nice to notify the, the neighbors, but if there isn't a problem, there isn't a problem. You know, it just becomes a problem if the neighbors complain about unruly or smelly or noisy conditions. Then, then let's do something. In the meantime, what it be?
Do a barbecue.
Pardon?
If there's a problem, we'll have a barbecue.
Gosh!
Barbecue, chicken.
Sexy crispy.
Oh, boy.
It, it does say that if the city may inspect the premises for which a permit has been granted in order to ensure compliance with the section. So if there is something that a neighbor were to contact the city and say so and so is doing something in, you know, not, not in compliance with the policy, the city could follow up on that and cause them requests of the change. So.
We're covered.
We think, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, moving down to resolutions, uh, resolution sixty-five dash twenty-eight C at eighteen, accepting a donation and designating its use.
I'll make a motion to accept a donation, uh, generous donation of five hundred dollars, uh, and a, uh, resolution sixty-five twenty-eighteen. Five hundred dollars for the fire pumper. Tucker, sorry, fire truck tanker.
Tanker, alright.
Not a pumper.
Resolution sixty-five dash twenty-eighteen has been introduced by council member Batch, or second by council member Cowell, and that is a resolution accepting a donation and designating its use. Just one correction, the, uh, individuals that made the donation are not from Arlington. They are from Minnetonka, since they own the personal check.
Mary and John Carey. Thank you.
I, uh, I know the Carey's or some of them and I suspected that maybe if I look at the check, it would give their address and it was Minnetonka. They own land in Sibley County or in Arlington area, but their address is Minnetonka. Okay, any, uh, other discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, council member Highland.
Yes.
Council member Cowell?
Yes.
Council member Yashewski?
Yes.
Council member Batch?
Yes.
Council member Haddles.
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted. Uh, resolution sixty-six dash twenty-eighteen and it is dealing with, um, the storage of wood and also with the, uh, fire.
Code.
Code or, or, um, yeah, excluding city staff from the fire restrictions.
I'll introduce resolution sixty-six twenty-eighteen, uh, approving ordinance three twenty-two entitled ordinance amending chapter six point oh eight, sub D one B, from the city code pertaining to the storage of firewood within the city of Arlington in chapter six point oh six, sub D, sub B, pertaining to allow it to allowed fires within the city of Arlington.
Second.
Resolution sixty-six dash twenty-eighteen was introduced by council member Batch, or second by council member Highland. The title has been read, I'm not gonna read it again, it's lengthy, dealing with, um, storage of firewood and also with fires within, a change of, uh, allowance of fires within the city of Arlington by city staff. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, vote by resolution, or a resolution by roll call, council member Cowell?
Yes.
Council member Haddles.
Yes.
Council member Yashewski?
Yes.
Council member Highland.
Yes.
Council member Batch.
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted. Just one question before we move on, how did changes like this now as far as, how does the code, how and when does the code get changed to reflect the changes you're making?
As soon as it's passed and we convert it in our office.
Okay.
And are we still sending that to Vicki or is she no longer?
I believe we are still sending it to Vicki.
We did the last time. And then, uh, she can pass it on electronically. Uh, the zoning ordinance, as you recall, we set it up so that we can change individual sections without reprinting the whole thing. And, uh, cause we anticipated that's the one, well, it's, it's by far the lengthiest chapter. And it's also one that we change the most. So, uh, my secretary figured out a way to do that. So, yeah, uh, in fact, I've already notated my agenda, they haven't heard.
Okay.
Pick those changes up and transmit those to Vicki.
So then I guess the thought behind my question was that, uh, whatever a citizen would read online should be fairly current.
It should be, yes.
And reflect the changes.
Yes.
Shortly after they're made.
Now, the final step to get it online, I should ask Vicki, uh, or do you know, uh, she, uh, she directly involved in that? Or someone else updating the website?
It has been Annie in the past who's been updating, but I believe Vicki would be sharing that update with Annie and then she'd be used in on the website.
Yeah, I, I, I'll ask Vicki about that.
What about, um, board approval or, or to see that the wording is what we wanted? And this, or we'll just?
Oh, that, oh.
No, the qualification case.
Right off of the actual, or we just voted on.
Yeah, yeah. And then I approved the change and it goes to Vicki and I think she approves it again. And so.
Right.
We should call out any errors.
Okay. Um, item ten C, approve or deny the, uh, amending the purchase agreement for the, um, Caravel Ventures?
Which, which is actually the Nankazi, uh, project. Um, I've been talking a little bit with, uh, Matthew Johnson, owner of Nankazi, um, and we're, basically the city has followed through in terms of, uh, being ready and prepared to submit a request to the Job Creation Fund and also to proceed with the tax abatement. However, the information coming from, uh, Matt Johnson has, has taken some time for him to put together. So, uh, the, the intent of this is to give them a little more time to get those numbers, uh, finalize, get that information to us. Obviously, uh, if we're going to be doing a tax abatement, we have a requirement for a ten day notice prior to, uh, it even being discussed at a council meeting. And then we also have to then take it to the county as well. So, um, we'll be needing that time. I believe that, uh, Amy Newsom has been in touch with Matt and so some of that information is starting to come across. We simply didn't want to have to write another extension, so, uh, under Ross's recommendation, we pushed it out uh, until December first. So I know that they were anxious to do something there this fall in terms of, you know, moving some dirt and doing some different things. Um, but I, I still think their intent is to move as quickly as they can. And, uh, I think it will be more of a spring project that they'll be really getting into. So, uh, this just gives them a little more time uh, to work on that, but it's not because of anything that the city has not followed through or, on or not done. So. So in a nutshell, it's just moving the closing date from October first to December first.
Right.
And, uh, the actual wording was on or before December first. So if things come together a little quicker, you know, we'll proceed to close it before December first.
Good. I'll introduce resolution sixty-seven twenty-eighteen, approving a purchase agreement amendment between the city of Arlington um, and, uh, Caravel Ventures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Resolution sixty-seven dash twenty-eighteen was introduced by council member Batch, or second by council member Cowell. And then that is, uh, approving a purchase agreement amendment between the city of Arlington, Minnesota Municipal Corporation, seller and Caravel Ventures LLC and Minnesota Limited Liability Company. In effect, then it moves it from October first to, uh, on or before December first. Additional discussion? Questions? Hearing none, vote by roll call, council member Cowell?
Yes.
Council member Highland?
Yes.
Council member Yashewski?
Yes.
Council member Batch?
Yes.
Council member Haddles.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Item D, uh, this is the one that was added then, approve or deny resolution sixty-eight twenty-eighteen, approving terms of a loan to R and R Auto Repair for facade improvement loan.
We just talked about this at the EDA meeting, um, and we wanted to push it through. The paperwork was delayed a little bit on their part, um, kinda not following the rules quite, uh, as far as getting their paperwork in before construction started. However, we felt that it was, uh, um, exactly where, um, we wanted this program to focus and spend the money. So, um, they requested to push it along to the council.
I think they're doing a bang up job putting that building together. And Brickman right down the street, he's gonna have that Pink and White siding on that. No, I think R and R is, they've stepped up.
Yes, yeah, they, uh, that was, it's a pretty sharp, uh.
It's gonna be nice.
It's gonna look really great, yeah.
They've been good, good kids.
Yep.
All their career, very particular.
I'm just wondering how many bricks I paid for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll, uh, introduce resolution sixty-eight twenty-eighteen, approving terms of a loan to R and R, uh, Auto Repair from the Arlington EDA facade program, uh, for the project at one seventeen West Main.
Fergon.
Resolution twen- sixty-eight dash twenty-eighteen was introduced by council member Batch, or second by council member Highland. Resolution is approving the terms of a loan to R and R Auto Repair from the Arlington EDA facade improvement, improvement loan program for a project at one seventeen West Main Street. Any discussion? Questions? Hearing none, vote by roll call, council member Yashewski?
Yes.
Council member Haddles.
Yes.
Council member Batch?
Yes.
Council member Cowell?
Yes.
Council member Highland?
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Uh, moving on to item eleven, approve or deny the sale of nineteen eighty-eight Chevy Cheyenne, twenty-five hundred four wheel drive standard cab pickup? And this was, uh, pickup that was put out on sealed bids, uh, what, about a month ago? And, uh, the bids were opened on, at five o'clock this afternoon. Um, the high bidder at a bid price of six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars was Jay Jensen. So, Mr. Jensen will be contacted and, um.
How many other bids did we have?
There were eleven bids total.
Oh, wow.
Ranging from the high bid of sixty-one fifty to the low bid of thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-three.
Well, that's a good price, I think, huh?
Yep.
Does, does that money go back to the buyer, to the relief or whoever, or whoever paid for it?
Come back to the city. That's a city owned.
I believe it comes back to the city.
City.
I will double check and send an email out on that.
What are the provisions? Say, Mr. Jensen says, well, I really don't, I changed my mind, I don't want it. Cause he, I mean.
Is he bound?
Is he bound by the, by the bid? I.
I would think so. Um, he hasn't signed any written agreement yet. Uh, he's morally bound but not legally bound.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, if something happened and, you know.
We could take the second highest.
Then just keep moving down the list. Next highest bid would be fifty-three hundred and seventy-nine, so. So, is there a motion to accept?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, approve the sale of the ADH Chevy, uh, Cheyenne, four wheel drive standard pickup for sixty-one fifty.
Jay Jensen.
Jay Jensen.
J E N S E N.
Second.
Motion by council member Batch, or second by council member Cowell, to accept the bid of Mr. Jay Jensen for the nineteen eighty-eight Chevy pickup. And the bid price, the bid submitted was six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Any questions? Hearing none, or did you say hi?
Hi.
Hi.
Did I hear a question?
No, I just.
Okay. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, um, whoop, that was new business. Moving on to miscellaneous, are there any committee updates?
I'd like to touch on the marketing hometown America meeting I was at last, when was it?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Um, great turnout, um, a lot of excitement, a lot of community, uh, members involved in committees um, that are, um, working on promoting, um, uh, businesses in town. Uh, social, uh, photos, uh, brochure, marketing, um, lot of excitement. The, one thing that makes a difference from the five year plan, the comp plan, the other great things that we've gotten, a lot of community involvement in in the past was, um, the, the focus on doing something now, actually forming committees to take this information, the pieces that were really important to the people that were there. Moving forward, we have, um, I think Pat mentioned or whatever, four, four meetings coming up with the different committees and, um, it, there, there's a lot of fire there. So it was really great. I think at the end of the day, I was kinda hesitant at the beginning, but now, I mean, I think it was well worth all that, all the effort that was put in. So.
Yeah, I don't know, how many were in that, between twenty and thirty people?
It seemed like there was about thirty or thirty-five people there. I don't know. There, there was quite a few. Yep, people from in town, people from out of town. I was surprised there was, uh, uh, someone from Belle Plaine, Gaylord, um, I'm not sure where else, but it was, and people that lived outside of town or whatever too, so.
So there were people eager to get on committees to work on different things and?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Came away with four committees, uh, at the end of the day, uh, one was for signs and promotions. Um, another one was for builders and developers, and that's basically to have a meeting with builders and developers to talk about why are they not building in Arlington, uh, see if there's any role that the, that the city can play or that anybody can play to help spur development in the city. Uh, culture of support for new business was another committee. And then, marketing Arlington's pictures, uh, showing people in a lot of promotions and different things. So. Yeah, it was kind of exciting time to be there and people were very excited to take action. So this.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think it was, um, eh, over the last fifteen years or so, I mean, from what I've seen, one of the most well attended, uh, when you count out, I mean, how many people were involved? There were seven groups of about ten people each. So there was probably over seventy people that were involved. Now that, that night, there was probably about thirty-five. Half of them were involved in the small groups and half of them were people that weren't involved in the small groups, but were, um, there at the end to see what came out of it. And like I said, I mean, it was just, it's just really refreshing and exciting to know that there's citizens that are willing to put in the time and effort to promote, um, our town. So.
Very passionate about Arlington. Th- this information will be put up on the, uh, Facebook page and the website page. So if there are individuals who maybe for some reason or another weren't aware or weren't able to attend and they wish to participate, um, the meetings have already been set, the locations. um, the meetings have already been set, the locations and times of meeting have been set. Individuals who are interested in those topics are more than welcome to come and join those groups, so.
One or all of them, I mean, that's what we were talking that night too, I think. It was nice to see, um, everyone excited about setting up a date for, for meetings after this. I think a lot of times, things after they're done, after the survey's done, kinda gets thrown up on the shelf and you don't see it again. And for, for the group to have four committees that are coming out of it to actually take action was really exciting, and a lot of the members, um, also talked about crossing over and going to other meetings because they were excited not only about where they were focusing, but on where the other groups were focusing too. So, um, it was really great, it was, it was great.
The facilitator was very forceful in, in saying, it doesn't stop tonight, you know, we, you, if you're in a group, you pick a meeting night that you're gonna meet the next time, he wouldn't let anybody get out unless they were committed to that, so. He was, he was very good, I liked his approach, very good.
Ben Winchester coming to speak to us. Jim and I have met once, and he's very dynamic and has a lot of information, valuable information, that this group, eh, eh, they're, you know, about the same thing.
We, we still have that on our radar to get him scheduled to come in and to talk, so. And then opening it up to the larger community of Arlington, and also other communities nearby if they wish to attend, but we, we do have that on our radar list. We haven't gotten it accomplished yet, Ben, but with renewed commitment, we will get it done before year end.
Um, I also attended, partially attended, uh, a meeting between, uh, South Central, um, Co-op, uh, where we get our insurance through for the city employees. Um, that was very informational meeting, um, pretty much at the end of the day, hey, we have no control in the muh, in the amount of, uh, the increase because we're in a pool, and there's like a market, that's what everybody else is paying, and we're well below the market. So, that's why we're jumping the past two years to kinda get up to that market level. Um, we asked questions regarding, you know, what if we go look somewhere else? Well, they came back and said, well, you're not even at market rate yet, so, you know, once, once groups get to the market rate, then it would probably be, uh, in their interest to go maybe look, you know, out and see if they can find something. So, that was, that was a piece that I wanted to share with everybody, that it was informational.
Our fault.
It's not our fault, it's, it's, we have very low rates. We're just, now, they're just trying to get us up to what the market rate is, whatever, you know, what we should be paying.
And we don't wanna do that.
I know we don't wanna do that, we have no choice though. And then, and then I left the meeting before they talked about the wellness, um, and different things that they're pushing out there, or whatever, to help. So, and they also talked about how they not only have this insurance, but they have over insurance too that we're covered by, so that our policy, if it's four hundred thousand, and it's more than that, well, we have coverage for that too. They did say though, that, um, we supply our city employees with a Cadillac version of, um, healthcare. That, um, a lot of companies, or a lot of companies, or a lot of, um, institutions don't, um, offer their employees.
In what way are they Cad- I mean, in what way are they?
Um, so the Cadillac would be the eighty-twenty up to like their deductible, and then after their NR deductible is fairly low, it's not really high.
Really?
I mean, I think, what is it, thirty-five hundred?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, um, for individuals, right? A little bit more for families. Um, so that's relatively low in today's world, I mean, usually you're not finding that, but, um, more so than that piece is, it's, uh, eighty-twenty to that piece, and once you hit that your deductible, then it's a hundred percent. And so, a lot of, um, that, that's one piece maybe that in the future, if we.
Could be restructured a little bit.
We could restructure that a little bit. So, I mean, we feel bad when we, you know, change the percentages and stuff like that that we did last year, but, I mean, honestly, they have a really, really good program, yeah, the employees do, so.
Do we have a medical savings account for the employees?
Yep, yep. Yep, and I think we give them fifteen hundred dollars.
Eighteen.
Eighteen hundred dollars, so, but they can also tax before taxes, contribute to that, and I think the cap is like sixty-five hundred dollars if you're under fifty-five, or.
Sounds about right.
Yep, and then it goes up after, when you hit fifty-five, it goes up a little bit more, so if we pay eighteen and they wanna put in, what's the difference to hit sixty-five, they can do that pre-tax. So, they can at least have enough money in the bank to hit their deductible and then.
Right.
Yeah. So, that's a, that's a good program.
That's big, that's huge.
Yeah.
And I think we've talked about in the past too, how some other communities are receiving s- smaller inc- increases, uh, but I think also if you were to take a look at what they're currently paying, they may be receiving a, a nine percent increase. We're receiving a twenty percent, we're comparing ourselves to them, but even with their, with our twenty percent and with their nine percent increase, Arlington employees are still paying less.
We're leveling out.
Than what those who are receiving the nine percent increase.
Well, and then if you look at like the, the, the insurance itself, right?
Quiet.
So, it's a lot better. But that's one place where in the future, if we needed to maybe, you know, do something, there is a lot of wiggle room there, where, and they were very receptive as far as, you know, uh, when, when we, uh, get to, uh, negotiating terms and stuff like that, again, to bring us a couple different options that they see, but, um, they said too, I mean, it's pretty much a à la carte, you can, you can make it however you wanna make it, so they're wide open.
And something that the council, if you're receptive to maybe having some discussion about, you know, we, we do have a third-party administrator who, um, is kind of our go-between, who works a lot with us and is, is more knowledgeable in the health insurance side of things. But in, in my opinion, uh, there isn't a whole lot of, uh, assistance being given to the city of Arlington. It seems that oftentimes when we come up for renewal, it's delivery of that sheet of paper saying this is how much your increase is, and then we don't see him until next year, and I guess I would just toss up for consideration, is the city receptive to maybe looking for somebody who would be a little more involved with us in terms of dealing with our health insurance? Because it was South Country Services Co-op who actually came out and met, met with us, and is able to provide us with some of those answers, and at least in the time that I've been here, I feel like we haven't really had a, um, strong partner in.
Yeah, what, what they said, though, though, it was typical to have like a third party.
Yeah.
I mean, it is typical to have an administrator, um, so that we're not directly working with. And the Co-op, being a part of the Co-op, uh, and with our rates being where they're at, and hopefully they'll stay around market, I think their goal is to get us at market and keep us at market rate, or just below, or something like that. Um, but where it does come in handy to have an administrator is when we get to market rate or above market rate, so they can shop around a little bit for us, or something like that, and be more involved, um, you know, and, and then they also said, you know, but if you choose to leave the Co-op, you know, and then wanna come back, you know, uh, I don't know. So, there's a lot of good things said at that meeting, though.
What would be involved in looking at switching and, and maybe finding another person to represent?
It would just be a matter of, of us electing to go with another individual. There are several individuals within the area who provide, you know, that type of service. But I guess I would hope for somebody who would maybe be a little more engaged to give us mid-year reports, or would come in and, and do some health initiative type things. The service co-op d- does have programs, but someone who would put us down and say, hey, Arlington, let's have a session, and let's talk about what's going on with employees, instead of just waiting.
Have we reached out to that person, maybe they would be willing to do that.
There are others who are willing to do it, correct?
Well, no, but the person we currently have, I mean, if he doesn't know that we want that, you know, maybe he's not, you know, if he knew that we wanted that, maybe he would come out, or whoever it is would come out and do that.
Well, I think you've contacted him multiple times, haven't you, already?
Yeah, yeah.
And there's really nothing.
I haven't been very successful in getting a, uh, copy of the other quotes that we were, that he ran for us to get insurance outside of the Co-op. And so, that's where I've reached out to a few others, just.
Does the league have something insurance-wise that we can take on to or look at?
I don't believe that they do, uh, but I will double check with, with them and see.
God, they have everything else.
They do, they do, it seems like they do have everything else, but I'm not aware of many.
Maybe we can bring it up at a meeting or something like that, and put it on the agenda, and have more discussion about it or something at a different point, be able to
Yeah, I think we should, I mean.
Take some action.
I mean, you're the one that deals with them mostly, and if you don't feel that we're getting, you know, good representation there, and some effort to communicate, uh, I think we should, we should talk about making a change. So. Any other reports? Committee reports? Hearing none, motion is in order to adjourn.
I just have one thing.
You do that every time.
I want open discussion, we're not talking about reports. I want open discussion.
Okay, open discussion.
What? I always started by motion.
Time out.
No time out.
Open discussion, Mr. Highland.
Um, I, uh, I talked to a, uh, Sibley County Fair Board member today, and they were wondering about the tiling over by the bull riding event, where nothing is going on, and the, um, there's concern about the holding pond where the water goes into. Their concern is they'd like to get something done this fall before the ground gets hard, and, uh, that ain't very far off. One thing he, he did say that the tile would be down far enough, and basically, a rainfall would not rush into the holding pond. It would seep down through the tile and then move over to the holding pond. But we'd have to probably have Jason, our engineer, check that out, and they'd like to start digging about nine-thirty tomorrow morning. That ain't gonna happen, right?
Unfortunately not, we're, we're working on following up on a few things, but, um, it is front and center, uh, so.
All right. Well, they asked me to pass that along, so I just did.
Yep, I talked to them like this afternoon as well, so, yeah.
I'll second your motion.
Oh, there was a motion, huh?
Not gonna believe you think.
Motion by councilmember Haddelstedt, second by councilmember Batchard to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried, meeting adjourned at seven forty-three.